Hooray Town Council will now come to order. Will you please stand and join me in a moment of silence? Hey, I'll ask our most recent college graduate, Councilman White, to read us a pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Dofmire.
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
All right, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that Town Council add Agenda Item Roman numeral nine dash E, LPD grant approval and Harper reallocation to the agenda.
Second.
Second, Bill.
Discussion? Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Uh, yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Concern Agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to propose that we approve the fine consent agenda. The minutes of the regular council meeting of five oh eight twenty-three, minutes of the work session, five twenty-one twenty-three, the accounts payable ending three hundred seven thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for the financial period ending five thirty-one twenty-three.
Second.
All right, discussion. Danielle?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. S- Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Okay, general citizen comments, no one has signed up, is there anyone here tonight who wants to speak? All right, Chamber of Commerce, Gina, always nice to have you.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow councilmen and women for having me to this evening for an update. So first, just want to thank you all so much for your support of the Chamber of Commerce over the many, many years with whatever, you know, coming to meetings and just kind of talking out and hashing out and figuring out how we can overcome certain things, and you guys have always just been a great supporter, not only in grants that you give the Chamber year after year, but they're just having your all's loyal support and things like that. We greatly appreciate it, and it does not go unnoticed, so thank you all so much. Just a couple of updates, since I haven't been here for a little while, we've been going through some transitions, as you all probably are well aware. So the Board of Directors had a board retreat last August, and we came with great things out of that meeting, so we're actually going through a rebranding and strategic planning process right now. Some of you all have been part of those sidebar meetings as far as what that strategic plan looks like and gave back some feedback in how we could move forward with our organization. We've been there for ninety-seven years, so we want to continue that process of what that looks like. So we're currently still working through that rebranding, which will come out with new logo, a new Chamber website, and then what our strategic plan will look like and what we would like to focus on. We can't be the end-all-be-all to everybody, so we want to narrow it down and focus on what we're good at and what we can succeed on and still help our businesses in the community with their membership. But a couple of things that we've been discussing that is kind of on the verge of things that will be happening in the future. I've been working with the Virginia State Chamber on a healthcare plan they've been working on for the last several years, so that is about to launch. It's called the Wise Choice Healthcare Alliance, and they would have to be, businesses would have to be at fifty employers or less, and they get a great offering for healthcare benefits through this program, and they're working it out to where the chambers get kicked back off of that percentage and spread it out. But then the other benefit for us and other chambers is in order to have and get that benefit through us, they have to be a Chamber member, so we're hoping that'll also increase our membership with having that extra benefit if people see value in adding that to their employees. We're also looking at maybe possible travel, Chamber travel down the road as well, working with a couple organizations with seeking out further in regards to just maybe going out of the country, different things like that, and it's built in with part of that as their revenue to get a kickback for us for non-duse revenue. So we're looking at what that looks like and how well that would go over here if people would be interested in traveling to Italy or Paris or Ireland or just different places like that at the discounted price that they offer for us. Just looking at other things as well, we're looking at adding the leadership programs like some fellow chambers around the area have done for businesses as well as our seniors in high school. So it is anywhere from an eighth-month course where they meet on a regular basis, once a month, twice a month, and just go around and do different classes and things like that, and then at the very end they get to graduate with that. So we're working through that to bring that, and that'll hopefully also bring in some revenue for the Chamber in offerings. We're currently at four hundred and twenty-five members, so we're still maintaining a good number for, you know, being in a small community, four hundred and twenty-five members is great. We're still plugging along with some current events that we're still doing, business after hours still has a great turnout. Our women in business is growing, we're having great discussions with different speakers with that, and so our women in the business category has grown, and I'm very pleased with the numbers that have been coming up for that. Our luncheon learns as well as doing good, our business seminars are doing well. Our ribbon cuttings, thank you all so much for, you know, if it's in the town of Loray and even Stanley, that you all come out and support those ribbon cuttings or anniversary ribbon cuttings, so we greatly appreciate Steve and his staff, both Danielle's and Jerry for coming out for those. We saw the radio shows and as well as the orientations that we give our new members. We did start a new council that's called the Nonprofit Council, so all the nonprofits in the community can come, and the surrounding community if they serve Page County, where we get together and just discuss, you know, as a collaborative group, what we can conquer and things like that. So we're currently working with Unite Us on a program, so instead of someone in need going to Page One and then they go to this church and then they go to Arise, and they're just kind of hitting up all of them. This program that we're trying to get everybody on board and trained on will kind of serve as that one-stop shop for everybody, so it doesn't matter what office they come into, you can pull up their information, you can already see where they went, how much money they got. We can send referrals, so if they come in and need transportation and mental health, you know, we have in our system. So it's just, it's going to be a great way for us to help track and regulate how things work, but it's also going to be able to give us great feedback in regards to what is missing, if we are missing mental health, if we're missing transportation in the community, and then that way we can maybe go after and help, you know, the county or the towns with grants in order to provide those services and get those businesses here. The group is also working on other things, but right now that's our main focus, is to get the Unite Us program up and into all the nonprofits and the churches and things like that in partnership. We're happy to have the farmer's market this coming Saturday, actually, it's going to be the very first one, so Jackie and I are happy to have it at our location, so thank you all so much for working with Ms. Courtney in regards to bringing that, we're excited to have the opportunity once a month. And then we had a great annual banquet and awards for the ones that attended, thank you all so much for sending so many of your council and their significant others out. I hope you all had a great time for that, it was a wonderful evening and a fantastic time. So that is my update, if y'all have any questions or anything like that, be happy to answer.
When you said something about the healthcare, I immediately wondered, do we have businesses in town that don't offer healthcare to the employees?
Hmm, we're one. Yeah, most of your tourism businesses that are, you know, tourism-related or small companies, it's quite a, it's quite an undertaking as far as price-wise and price-point.
What type of health insurance, is it like what I would have in my job? I mean, does it?
So they're still working out those details, like I said, they haven't fully launched it, so we're still working, the state of Virginia, or the state of Virginia, the Virginia Chamber of Commerce, along with their partners, are still working out those details, so I'm not ready to roll it out until they're fully ready to roll it out. So right now I'm gathering what all of our insurance companies are here in the community, so then they can be on the same page and know this program is here and kind of, and get them that information, and then let them know that we're on board, that we want to offer it as well, as a benefit through us.
I had one other question. When you talk about the Unite Us, is that the same thing you talked to me about both?
It's somewhere, yes, it's the same, Unite Us.
Okay. Just trying to put things together in my head.
But it's not exactly the same.
Yep.
Unite Us is exactly the same.
We're still looking for someone to, like a position coordinator to head that up, that is also in conversation with the Nonprofit Council. It would be nice to, and that way, and that way Unite Us isn't having to go and train Page One, and if they got turnover, now they got to train them again on this program. So it would be nice to have a one-point contact person in the community that could be that point of contact, still use the system and refer people and send them where they need to and be that point of contact, but then we won't have to worry about the turnover and things like that, and, you know, Page One is ran by volunteers and by older folks, so when you get into the computer world, when they're used to strictly all paper, it's going to be a learning curve for them.
Right. So how far along is that?
So we have seven nonprofits signed up for it so far, so we've still got a ways to go out of all the nonprofits we have in the community, but Harrisonburg is going on two years, and they are just now getting most of theirs in, so it's a task to undertake. So for most of the ones that attend the meeting say they want to join, they just haven't taken the time to go in and join, it's just getting them the information, partnering them with Margaret, who's the one who's been working with us from Unite Us, she is more than available to do either a Zoom meeting, or she's happy to come in and, you know, do it in our office or their office and show them, walk them through how to sign up, and then even, she's already had one training session to show them actually, for the ones who have already signed up. I know PACA signed up, the REC Living Legacy signed up, Page One has signed up.
Any churches?
Not yet, I don't have any churches signed up, but I do have some churches attending the nonprofit council, yep.
That's good.
Gina, are you able to get that, I'm sorry, I had to step out for a minute, are you able to get some of that info out? I know I'll pass it along to my church, I'm sure they're very interested.
Absolutely, yep.
If you can get that to all the council.
Yep.
Council, anybody else? Thank you, Gina.
All right, you're welcome, thank you all.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Well, hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council for allowing us to come out and present to you all tonight. So my name is Ryan Covage, and I'm the chairman of Page Alliance for Community Action.
And I'm Carrie Campbell, I'm the youth coordinator for Page Alliance for Community Action, PACA.
PACA is much easier to say, so a lot of times we feel like you may see our logo or you see our name, and you're like, oh, great, PACA is here, but what exactly are we and what do we do? So in order to provide a little bit of that educational background, we put this together for you all. Go to the next slide. So just the purpose of this presentation, basically just to increase your all's awareness and understanding of who PACA is, a little bit more about what we do, what our mission is, Carrie's going to explain a little bit what why PACA is, and illustrate the impact that not only PACA has, but why PACA has on our community. We want to raise awareness on the substance-related issues that are facing our communities, and lastly, show you kind of some of our plans to combat these rising issues. Next slide. So what is PACA, and I hate to read from a slide, but for this one I'll give you our mission statement. So Page Alliance for Community Action is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit coalition of agencies, parents, youth, and concerned citizens. Our main goal is provide a healthy, or excuse me, healthy life choices for the youth and families in Page County, we work to provide a healthy, drug-free environment for those in our community. The big thing I just want to highlight here is our nonprofit coalition of agencies, youth, and citizens, it's a group collaborative effort, okay? It's not just five people leading this thing, we have great partnerships with our municipalities, with our law enforcement, with our education, pretty much everyone in the community comes together to support us, and we try and do that in return. Next slide. So just a couple of the notable accomplishments and statistics that we've managed to pull off, so we've partnered with Page County Sheriff's Office to conduct compliance checks, party patrols, and teach hidden in plain sight. So for those of you who don't know what hidden in plain sight is, basically, we see a lot of emerging drug trends, and our youth obviously pick up on those very quickly, certainly in the days of social media, it's kind of a constant-changing trend, so we try and educate parents on some of the things that they may see. We actually have like a mock trailer that's set up like as a bedroom and a kitchen, and just shows some different things, like even a highlighter or a can of soda can actually be used to conceal like vaping devices and different things like that. We've established community gardens in the towns of Stanley, Loray, and Shenandoah, and actually generate hundreds of pounds of produce per year for our citizens to take with them. And if you guys have not been out to the community garden here in Loray, you should go check it out, it's really nice, everyone's been working really hard on it. So we've been able to provide over thirteen thousand youth meals, over seven hundred eighty-seven packs of diapers, and nearly six thousand dollars in utility assistance through our portrait visits program. So we've partnered with our localities to increase event attendance by, God bless you, by bringing volunteers, doing our marketing, and just an example here in Loray, our Sunflower Festival saw over two thousand people last year, and it was a ton of fun. And then we've tried to support the deterrent of substance use in our local schools by providing vape detectors in the restrooms, random drug screening for students, and extracurricular activities, we're directing to school dance such as after prom, after-school programs.
Can I ask something? Yeah. How'd y'all get out thirteen thousand meals?
A lot of walking. So that position, that program is grant-funded, and it allows us to provide hot meals to families all over Page County.
Like Meals on Wheels for elderly people?
Similar, but the requirements are different, so it's typically more based for families in need or low-income families, and we actually go to their door, we're able to deliver those meals.
I didn't know that.
It's great.
Yeah.
It's a good program.
So it's prepared or prepackaged, or like?
So it can be a mix, but most of the time they can be prepared, hot meals, and ready to go, so, but it's great. Next slide, sorry. So I'll let Carrie tell you all a little bit more about why PACA, and what those guys are.
So why PACA just stands for Youth PACA, our mascot is an alpaca, so if you see kids in hot pink t-shirts with alpacas on them, they're probably one of my guys, it's just easy and recognizable, and it kind of makes it fun. So that's actually one of our t-shirts over there on the right, and what you can't see is that running down the side of it, it also says, "Making Drug, Making Page County Drug-Free Starts With Me," so that's kind of their motto. These are concerned youth who work together to promote healthy life choices and a drug-free environment for everyone in our community, they recognize that drugs are an issue in our world, not just in our community, but that they have seen them to our community and that it's something that we need to acknowledge right now, and who better to acknowledge that than our youth. So they're students in grades nine through twelve in Page County public schools, but we also have homeschool students who have participated, we certainly would, you know, welcome kids from private schools, we don't have any right now, but we have had homeschool students, and we aspire to build the clubs within our middle schools for the upcoming school year, that works out kind of well now that I'm a middle school teacher, I've moved from high school to middle school, so we're working on that for the upcoming year. I'll talk about this when we talk about trends in just a few minutes, but you wouldn't think you'd need to address it in middle school, but we do, and so we are aware of that and we want to be vigilant. Our goals include empowering our youth to become leaders within the community and using their voices to make a change, and usually we would have one of our why PACAs here with us, it just happens to be summer vacation, and quite honestly, the kids who participate in why PACA participate in a thousand other things as well, so they're just busy. My daughter's one of them, and she has softball, volleyball, and cheer, so it's just really hard for them to get to things like this in the evenings, but it's not that they don't care, that they're indifferent, they're just as busy as everybody else. So they, some of the things that they do throughout the year are design toilet talks, which are just the little posters that go on the backs of the bathroom stalls in our schools, they write morning announcements for various different activities that we're doing, or campaigns like the Red Ribbon Week campaign, radio ads, and they've produced some of the billboards that PACA has had throughout the community promoting prevention and mental health awareness. They're very savvy with graphic design. Next slide.
Can you go in the other direction? Sorry, that was the previous one.
There we go. So these are just some pictures of the various things that the kids have been involved in, I won't go over all of them, but for example, the top left is one of the Christmas parades, so our theme for this year was breaking news because the theme was past, present, and future. We see a future that's drug-free in Page County, so we created the WHSV TV screen that represented a drug-free Page County for our future, bless you. And then the middle on the bottom row, those are two of our students in one of our local convenience stores, they actually do a program that's called Sticker Shock, so they have stickers that are produced by the beverage control, Virginia Beverage Control, but they take those stickers and they go into our local convenience stores and put them on the beer boxes and all of the alcohol that's being sold that say basically, wait, are you twenty-one, or are you purchasing this for someone who's under twenty-one, because these are our laws, bless you. So that's what they're doing, we've had people say before, those kids are touching the alcohol, but they're doing it for really good and positive reasons, they're not trying to get themselves into trouble, so it does, it's a bright yellow sticker and it makes you kind of think when you look at it. And then this is another campaign, this was before prom last year, where the kids did the Arrive Alive campaign with YOASABO. So we were honored, last summer, we did, one of our camps is YADAP, and that's Youth Alcohol and Drug Abuse Prevention Project, which is really hard to say, that's even harder than PACA to say, but basically that's one of the camps that we participate in, and we won the highest award or honor that they give every year, and that was the esteemed Wheeler Award, so that grant is for five hundred dollars, and that was for our project the previous year where we did swag bags for all of our driver's ed students, and those, they put things like a keychain, a rack card that had like safe driving facts and that type of stuff. The kids put all of that together, they actually like packed the bags and all of that stuff, everything was done on their own, and then they distributed them to all the kids who graduated from driver's ed classes that year, so it was kind of a big deal. We also do lots of different things throughout the year just to provide safe, healthy, drug-free events, I won't read all of them to you, but for example, we hosted a rave dance at Shore's Pool, and that was, that was a lot of fun, and we had as much fun as the kids did. We always do trunk or treats, and we participate in National Night Out and the fair and all of those things, just to get the kids out and representing the organization. We also assist with community service projects in our schools, we help with the community gardens, and we're at the REC at least every other week, through the summer we're there once a week, which is really exciting, we're actually doing spoken word poetry with them this summer, so there'll be a poetry slam at the end of the summer, anybody's interested in coming out to see that. And then we promote prevention through social media campaigns, sticker shock, counter tools, and participation in YOASO, YADAP, Y Street, and CADCA. CADCA is Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, we're taking four youth there this summer to Dallas, Texas.
You have like your acronyms, don't you?
Keeps us hopping.
Yeah. Carrie, does the schools provide time in the day for y'all to meet with kids?
That's a really good question, so that's been tricky, they do with the club days, we're one of the clubs on the agenda for club days, now that I'm not at the school, it's been a little bit trickier, so that's why we'd like to get started with the middle schools. They have the CCLC after-school programs, so I can get in through that as well, Ryan's helped with that as well at Page Middle, we're going to try to get that at Loray Middle for this upcoming year, and then, we're just trying to get in the door any way we can, so yes, but it's not as easy when you're not in the building.
Well, it's Page and the other mills, they're all involved, right, the whole county?
Yes, yes, we do have the whole county.
Well, the main thing I've seen is your billboards.
Good, awesome, that's good, Gina.
It's good to hear. So some of the ways that we impact this community and count building on everything Carrie is saying, so we do provide the family-friendly events, not just for kiddos and youth, but we also want parents to feel like they can come to a safe place with their kids, provide the numerous school programs, which Carrie talked about, our after-school programs, awareness campaigns, we enjoy supporting our local municipalities, and that's not just in the form of marketing or volunteer labor, we actually try to promote infrastructure improvement, you know, we've basically raised some money for the installation there at Ralph Dean Park, we installed some sensory panels out there, great work parks and rec. Also able to provide some things to the Wiglong Village there in Shenandoah, and then also some additional items to the Hawksville for one Stanley. We love to provide resources and education to those combating addiction, we want to empower these folks, trying to seek ways to help themselves and better themselves, and then we're also able to conduct various trainings, both for youth and adults, we do train such as Revive, which teaches you actually how to address an opioid overdose and how to administer Narcan, we do adverse childhood experiences training, and then like Carrie mentioned, we have some national and local training opportunities, which we're going to bring back to our community, our kiddos got to meet our legislators, our congressmen, and our senators. Next slide. So these are just a couple of photos from some of our events, we do, like Mr. Vickers was saying, we do cover the entire county, so you see us all over the place, which is why my truck is now the PACA mobile, it all works out, so, next slide. So quickly, I'm just going to go through some of the impacts of substance misuse, it's something that a lot of people talk about here in the county, but it's sometimes this generic kind of pie in the sky, like, well, drugs are a problem here, but what does that actually mean? So alcohol, marijuana, and tobacco are among the most misused substances locally, especially among our youth, and for the purposes of this presentation, we're just focusing on cigarette smoking, because it is the leading cause of preventable death in the United States, you're talking nearly half a million people who are dying each year, that means nearly one in every five deaths are due to smoking, it's a preventable thing. It's also associated with other substance use, and again, we know addiction is a problem in every community, and ours is included in that. Next slide. So a lot of people too are talking about vaping and the impacts there from smoking and vaping, and you can see here, so a lot of folks have some misconceptions on vaping and those effects, but there are toxic metals that are in vapes, they can also contain nicotine, obviously, they can contain THC and other substances, so we've seen methamphetamine, not necessarily locally, but there has been fentanyl that's found in these vapes. These big vape companies, so they employ various marketing strategies, they pay lots of money in order to make this stuff happen, and you can see here clearly who they're targeting, right, you have these kind of younger teenagers who are looking cool and they're using these products, and the reason that is, is because the earlier you start using a product like this, the more likely you are to become addicted, and if you start vaping at an early age, there's a higher correlation of smoking traditional cigarettes later on, and vaping is treated very differently than cigarettes, there's very loose regulations, there's no real consistent tax across the country, so it's definitely an emerging problem, one that we are not getting in front of very well. Next slide. So just quickly, we are above the state and national average for cigarette use, we are also, we also know that cigarette use is associated with other forms of substance misuse, a lot of times folks call that the original gateway drug, and I think now we see vaping really starting to take over in that realm, and it remains a public health issue. Next slide. So Carrie, talk a little bit more about how, basically, we can help folks.
So one of the things that we always take away, we hear it over and over, and we take away from these conferences that we attend, is that addiction is a medical issue, it is not a moral failing, and I know that we have to tread lightly on that topic, especially in certain communities, but it is the truth, most people that you interview and ask them about their addiction, they do want to quit, they just don't know how, or they physically can't, their body is addicted to the substance, and so that's one of the things that we try to address, even with our younger, our student population, if a student is caught vaping or, kids don't get caught at school with cigarettes anymore, they get caught with vapes, and so if they get caught with something like that, they're put on a cessation program, it's a computer-based program that works them through that, but they generally express that they do want to quit, they simply just don't know how, and so that's something that we can work through with them, not only do we have a cessation program, but we work with like Quit Now Virginia, which will provide free cessation products, patches, or gums, or whatever the person might need to be able to quit, and just literature and information, educational information. So this gives you some of the background on that, but we try to address it from that standpoint, we realize that everybody has, you know, something that they're dealing with, and addiction is unfortunately something that wreaks havoc in communities like ours because it's affordable enough that you can access it, but it's not affordable enough that you can keep doing it monetarily, but also for your health, and so we want to get people to break that cycle.
Next slide. So lastly, just kind of in close- So lastly, just kind of enclosing here, you can see some of our goals. We want a happier, healthier, substance-free community. We want to delay the onset of use in our youth. We want to partner more with our local partners. We're so fortunate to be able to support them. They do a great job supporting us. We love working with the town of Luray, obviously the town of Stanley and Shenandoah and working with the county. We want to continue to grow and improve our community through this education and awareness. And we want to grow our family-friendly events. Just need a couple more people. Carrie, get up there. And much more, we have much bigger plans. So go to the next slide. Well, here's the best part. How you can help. That's right. Counsel's favorite part, the ask. So it's a simple one though. Just be aware. So it's really hard to know how to combat an issue if you don't know it exists. And it's tough because it may not be something that you're seeing right in your hemisphere, but it is something that's affecting all of our county. Stay up to date. So drug trends are constantly changing and that's why we lean on our law enforcement so heavily to help teach about this. And as kids are adapting and those who would distribute those drugs are also adapting, it's important that we adapt with them. That way we know how to combat them more effectively. Shameless plug to check out our website. I know the guy who runs the social media, he does a good job. Check us out on like Facebook, Instagram. It'll also really help you stay up to date, know what's going on and what next fun event you want to come to. And lastly, this is the biggest one that I would really highly encourage everyone here to think about, and that is please get involved. And that can look in any way. Come to the event, grab a rack card, which you won't get a choice because I'm going to give you one. Visit the community gardens. Hey, volunteer your time with some kiddos in the schools. They would certainly appreciate it. Just ask questions. Send us a message like, hey, you said this in the presentation. Can you expand upon that? Register for some trainings to help people about our organization. If you're in Walmart or you're at the grocery store or you're getting your car washed or doing whatever and someone says, well, there's nothing to do in this town, hit them with a rack card. No, tell them, hey, come out, check out our events. Check out PACA. Promote us. And just whatever you do, join us in trying to improve this community. Thank you. And thank you all for your time. I know we really, really appreciate it. I do have these rack cards that I'm going to pass out, but before I do, did anyone have any questions?
Counsel?
I guess just as a point of curiosity, like, do you have a lot of local specific data? I know you had the health profile stuff about the cigarette usage, but I mean, if you wanted to send that stuff along, it would just be interesting to see like if we're worse than your benchmark county, if we're worse in certain ways, like just what's going on Page county-wise?
We can definitely get that information to you. We actually distribute a PRIDE survey, which goes out through all of our schools and that gauges our local data on usage across a multitude of factors. So I'd be happy to share that with you.
It's also very interesting to look at the PRIDE data from pre-COVID until now and the trends, how they've changed within the schools since the kids were isolated for so long.
Do you all have your own grant writer? Or do you, I know years ago, I think y'all had Bobby.
Bobby Wells. We still have Bobby. But then Megan writes some of our grants and Liz Lewis has written grants for us. So we have several people on board. Ryan actually wrote his first grant recently. So yeah, we're all learning. Oh, sorry. I thought that one was, I wrote one for PACA. We didn't get it, but it was, it was interesting to learn the process just because I have a background in writing. Grant writing is completely different.
I'm assuming that all y'all do is everything's voluntary.
So we do have some paid staff members.
Through grant money?
I'm sorry.
Is that through grant money?
It is.
I think we give you money.
Then welcome to the, no, so we do have one full-time staff member, we have several, we have three part-time staff members and then we rely heavily on our volunteer force.
Sounds like way too much going on for a non-volunteer force.
It's, it's a lot. What we don't have is getting bored. We don't have that as an issue. We stay pretty busy. So.
It's just nice to see this that's moving in the direction with which you all are going with it and all that it's done in the past several years. I'm just going to share, I think it was around 2003, 2002, 2003 when PACA started and I was one of the members of that. We were, we'd beat out of Champaign. And the crazy thing is that happened tonight is we were trying to figure out what we were actually going to do, what the community needed, everything else. One of the things we discussed then was a community, we call it like a community calendar, or basically an organization of all the different services and everything to where if someone was looking for something or whatever, they could find it by going to one place instead of just, and also serving that to where it wouldn't be duplication of services or people taking advantage of certain things. And I was there the first couple of years Bobby Wells was on and then with the grant money, the amazing work that she did with the grants took, turned more with tied to the schools, more to the youth with what you all brought today. So anyway, I've been out of touch with it for some time, but it's nice to see what started back then and still trying to find its way to what you all have done. So thank you.
Appreciate that.
Counsel, anybody else? Mariana, Carrie, we thank you for being with us tonight. I for one learned a lot of, I didn't realize all the wonderful things you all are doing in our community and we thank you for what you're doing and wish you the best.
Thank you.
For being here tonight.
Thank you.
First thing is that.
All right, Luray Downtown Initiative, Ms. Elliott.
We got to give some much deserved recognition to Jackie tonight because she not only won service business for LDI for the Chambers banquet, but it's her birthday. So.
Oh, happy birthday.
Yeah. And after I do this, I'm cutting down.
Well-earned.
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. White. I appreciate that. And that is a, we were, to say that we were stunned was an understatement. I was very shocked when we, when we were called for the award. So we were thrilled about that. And that award belongs to all of you. That award belongs to Parks and Recs, the two Daniels and Steve and the ladies in the front office, and my entire Board of Directors and Board President because it takes a village. And we all, I feel like work is a pretty good team. So it was exciting for us. So first evenings on Main was this past Friday. It appeared that it went off pretty well. Ryan was gracious enough to fill in for me. I had another commitment that I had to go to, but we were able to pass out the downtown get-down flyers as well as the cruise-in flyers. We're working on the cruise-in. We've got the links and stuff going. So we're getting some positive feedback. So we're hoping that we're, we're hoping to get, have 50 cars is our goal. If we can have 50 cars, that'd be awesome. Goodie bags are in the works. Edward Jones was gracious enough to provide the trade bags for us and some other stuff. And we have some other swag coming in from other businesses and our door prices and whatnot. So everything's coming together pretty well with that. Ms. Lillard, did you notice that they've started working on the Browns building?
I was surprised. I wasn't surprised.
I wanted to just throw that at you to make sure you saw that. So that's exciting to see that that work is starting to happen. We do our transition strategies that we're going to be doing in July. Last month I had put that information in your packet with the schedule and everything. Moving along nicely, thanks so much to Steve for helping me with the survey. We put the survey together along with our board member Lauren Kennedy. That is out. Steve emailed me Friday and I, what did you, I think it was 20 that we had gotten back already. So we are starting to get some responses back. So my goal is to get 200 responses. So anyone who's watching the council meeting tonight, please go and fill, go and fill out that survey. You can go to the LDI website or the town website to get that done. And I think other than that, I think pretty much that's kind of the main things that we have going on in, in the LDI office. The next item on here are veterans banners. So over several months, I have had calls from people saying, how come Luray doesn't do the veterans banners? And, you know, and then I know that Danielle has received requests here at town office and she had forwarded some information to me. So I took it to our Board of Directors and I said, how would you guys feel about us taking this and getting veterans banners put up in the town of Luray? So then we reached out to the ladies, or to the auxiliary at the Luray VFW to see if they would be interested in partnering with us in this effort. After that, we reached out to Kristy Bosley in Stanley and had her come to a board meeting and she discussed their program with us and how that works. So what I'm asking tonight is if I could have an opportunity to attend your next work session where I can bring you all of the information, because my biggest thing right now logistically that I'm working on is the light pole situation. I need to know which ones we can use and get that information. So that's going to be a conversation that probably myself and Steve will be having with Shenandoah Valley Electric Co-op. But it is something I would like for you to think about. I think it would be something awesome for us to do in our town. We have, you know, a lot of veterans and I think it would be just a nice addition. The banners would be sold at $80. That is what they cost from the company. And what we would do is of course families would purchase those banners. The brackets are pretty expensive. I want to say $60 for the brackets. Oh, they're 80. Okay. So the brackets are expensive, but I, we are looking at doing some things maybe to do some fundraising and maybe some sponsors and things like that of people who would possibly help us purchase the brackets so that we don't, you know, we're not going to have to lay that money out. So, but if you guys could just kind of think about that and like I said, I would just like to come bring you the actual program, bring you samples, bring all of that to you. And then we can take a look at it and I'll be able to give you an intelligent count as far as the electric poles, because I have questions like, can we hang two banners on a pole? You know, because that's what they're doing in other towns. And so it's those kinds of questions that I need those folks to answer for me.
Jackie, don't the poles have brackets already? We have.
Mr., yes, Mr. Vickers. They have the brackets on them that hold the, the different seasonal banners that we put up. And then they also have the little flag holder brackets on them.
So why we need more brackets?
You, these banners are our different size. So you're going to need a different banner bracket for, to make it, to make it work. And then the other thing to think about is when we put them up, when we take them down, you know, how we would want to do that. So those are all things to, to think about. And I'm going to turn to the president of the auxiliary. Have I forgotten anything?
I don't think so.
Okay. And thank you for coming this evening, Susan. I appreciate you coming. But so yeah, so that's, I think that would be a nice addition to our downtown. And I think that, you know, would be greatly appreciated.
Counsel, I assume we would like to have Ms. Elliott come back at our next work session. Is that correct? I don't think we need to vote on this.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. Have a good, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Jackie, birthday card.
Oh, thank you. That's why you're my babe.
All right. We have a few public hearings tonight. The first one is special use permit 23-10, 8 Fry Lane. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Counsel's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and consider a request for a special use permit to install a manufactured home at 8 Fry Lane, tax map 42A3A49, in the R3 High Density Residential District as permitted in the town code section 402.3. E from Rexford Eugene Fry. This application is to replace a manufactured home that was destroyed by fire a number of years ago. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of the application at their May 10th meeting.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing on this matter. No one signed up to speak. Does anyone here tonight want to speak? Jean, you want to say anything?
I see that you approved.
Guess that's all we need. Steve, do we have any?
No comments.
Any comments or?
No, sir.
All right. Here are no comments. Nobody signed up. Then I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
I'm fine with it, but it says the roof must be constructed and we must approve the material. I mean, how would we, how would that function? How would we do that?
It'd be like a building code.
Yeah, primarily if this is a manufactured home, then.
It's going to be just like a standard roof, a standard metal roof or shingled roof?
Yes, sir. And if that's the case, then there is no further.
Okay. Again, I'm fine with it just.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion so that the gentleman can go home and have dinner or whatever else. So I move that the town council approve the special use permit to install a manufactured home at 8 Fry Lane, tax map number 42A3-A49, in the R3 High Density Residential District as permitted in town code 402.3E from Rexford Eugene Fry in compliance with town code section 402.3E as presented.
Second.
You have a discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, Jean. You're good to go. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Next public hearing, special use permit 23-11, 178 Allison Drive. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Counsel's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and consider a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 178 Allison Drive, tax map number 42A17-1-84.
45 P.
In the planned neighborhood development, PND zoning district from Wanacavi, Wakisi. The planning commission conducted a public hearing and unanimously recommended approval of the special use permit at their May 10th meeting.
All right. I'll open the public hearing on this special use permit. No one signed up to speak and I don't think there's anybody here left to speak tonight. Steve, did you get any correspondence?
No, sir. No, no comments.
All right. Counsel? Thank you. All right. Close the public hearing. Now, counsel.
Mayor, I have a motion. I move that the town council approve the special use permit to operate a lodging house at 178 Allison Drive, tax map number 42A17-1-84, in the planned neighborhood development zoning district for, I'm not going to, I'm going to butcher it.
Wanacavi, Wakisi.
With the conditions as presented.
Second.
All right. Any discussion, counsel? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Could practice it in your head.
I was, I felt confident until.
You did fine.
Thanks. Thanks.
Are we going further? Is there a chance we can, y'all can get a map of all the parcels in town so we can circle where all these Airbnbs are? I know we talked about it, but we didn't make the request. What do you got?
You guys made something like that, but.
We've given you one, and we can try and update it, yes.
Well, can we just get one big one put somewhere out back here so I can go by and look at it and say, okay, those are where the houses are now? Because I can't get in my head if there, besides Allison Drive, the other places in town where we have Airbnbs.
Well, yes, sir. We can definitely do that. They are primarily focused around Main Street because in the business district it is a buy right.
Okay.
Buy right.
Which makes sense.
And then there are several in the R3 district throughout the town.
It seemed like there was a good number of things on the survey people complained about. It's taken away a chance of them renting a house. Or I don't, I don't know if I believe that yet. So that's why I'm wondering.
Well, and part of the benefit of the townhomes going up behind Walmart is that there is a significant increase in the housing stock in Luray. In addition, there's new homes that are going up along Reservoir Avenue. So the, the good news is, is that the new homes that are being constructed continue to exceed the number of requests for short-term
With the, I guess, asterisk being that in the case of the townhomes with Walmart, it doesn't seem like it's a lot of local people going in there.
You are correct. They are, there is a segment that's being marketed to by the.
I'm not even sure that it would be super affordable for a lot of local people, to be honest. On the general gist of things, I wonder if it's worth discussing, you know? When we look at our zoning districts, are these more appropriate in certain zoning districts than others? I mean, my general thought is that maybe some of our denser districts, a short-term rental might make less sense, like you're thinking of, I think the R4 is the Boomfield and then R5 is our other densest district. I mean, are these the best fit in a district where you're talking about duplexes, triplexes, whatever else that are meant to be dense, affordable for families? In the case of the Boomfield, close to the schools, that was actually, proximity to the schools was a sticking point on one of the big short-term rentals, I think on Luray Avenue. So that's not getting rid of them. That's not saying that they're not going to be in other districts, but I think it would maybe for a next step be appropriate to discuss, you know, what districts doesn't make sense in and what districts do. It doesn't maybe make less sense.
All right. How do y'all want to proceed with it? Anybody else?
We do already do that to an extent, just, you know, just with what's by right, what's special use and what's not even by, what's prohibited essentially.
looking at our other districts and seeing, does it make sense or, you know, what do we want to adjust, if anything?
Cause this is still a new, uh, at least for us, a new and emerging not problem, right? It's it's kind of good, but you know what I mean, or a thing to tackle to make sure that we're handling appropriately, so. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
It seems to be on everybody's mindset. The banquet, we had a lady come up and say, hey, we have a neighbor that has one, and we said, call you, Danielle, so. Uh, you're the person that looks out for all the illegal ones and. Man, I definitely want to do that. Get a handle on who's, you know, not obeying the law. Will we do anything else?
Cause I know.
It's that old Billy stick out of the, out of the cabinet in there.
Cause I know we had talked about, you know, seeing, keeping track of districts where it gets really saturated and then acting. But it just feels like, in some cases, maybe acting ahead of time almost preemptively would be more appropriate than saying, oh, all of a sudden we've got a ton in the boom field, what are we going to do? Maybe we say, hey, places like R four and R five are just not the place, but maybe R two and R three along Main Street, nice historic homes, et cetera, think about Court Street, makes more sense there. But that's a long conversation we can have over the next few months.
All right, let's, why don't we put that off to the work session? Is that okay, Alex?
Definitely.
Just again, you're right.
I don't think we can cover it tonight.
No, and not tonight, certainly not, but let's.
And just the thought, I mean, maybe the conclusion would be no adjustment, but I think we should talk about it.
All right, sure, thank you. All right, uh, let's see, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, town rates and fees. Mister Burke?
Yes, your counsel's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and consider adoption of the FY twenty-three twenty-four rates and fee schedules. Uh, there's been a number of minor changes to the the rates that were advertised and and we've discussed with counsel previously. Uh, there is one, uh, letter of concern from Chuck Cisneros, uh, two east Main Street, primarily related to the number of garbage cans. Uh, part of what the is proposed with these rates is the maximum of three cans for commercial use with the provision that, uh, the individual businesses can request additional cans from town council. And if council does adopt the rates tonight, we will send out to that handful of businesses that would potentially be impacted by that change.
I thought, so, uh, and the last meeting where we had this discussion, that we had talked about seeing if they could do a second pick date? Was there any follow-up from that?
There's been notice of it, but I don't know that it's been received, if that makes sense. We've we've informed them of that option. You've informed two of that option?
Businesses?
The the one business that has frontage on both Broad Street and Main Street that if they desired, there's actually the potential for two days of collection. Rather than having the additional cans.
So it's not waste management is not interested? It's the businesses?
No, waste management has also indicated that if if there was a desire for a second day of collection, that they would consider it. And again, um, that that is an option, however, we're only talking about a handful of of businesses that are technically impacted by this change.
Yeah, but we can ask them if they can check their routes and see if if as they're coming away, going by, they stop one more time.
They've indicated, waste management has indicated that if the town desires to do that, yes, sir, it is. They they could accommodate our request for that.
Councilman Pettit had, it was a great idea of solving the whole problem without having space for dumpsters and the fact that they had to have so many, they had to pay more money. Well, they'd still be paying money if they got twice as many pullouts, wouldn't they? It's just, there won't be somebody on the street at one time. Okay.
So, again, if council adopts the the rates as approved tonight, we will be notifying the, I believe it's less than five. All right, about that?
Yeah.
Less than five.
Commercial, there's a couple more residential parts.
That are affected and 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 talk through what the issues are. Mister Cisneros, with the the, it's his location has the potential to have two-day collection.
First one I saw his letter, he spent a lot of money for trash pickup, it looks like. It's like five hundred bucks a month.
Yeah, he's got a private contractor that's picking up the off day from our normal collection.
That's gotta be a lot more costly.
Right, that's what he's gotten in his letter here. I was just reading too, so yes, it's, yeah. But like, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. No, we have, we have notified them of the potential for the two-day pickup specific to his location because he has two, two street frontages. Which doubles his collection potential.
Was that received as, oh, my bad, I forgot.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, you got it, you got it.
One question I was going to ask on, if we put this wording in there that a business that three extra are the max. And let, and then additional cart requests can be considered by town council. So what I'm guessing there is I wouldn't think a business is going to want more cans than what they feel. So if they typically roll out two cans every day, they're not going to want four, I mean, every week, they're not going to want four cans and be paying for two empty cans. My concern with this is when we put that limit on the business, this coming before council, just like we say there's five businesses that fall into this category. I would say any of them that have four more cans, I mean, have a total of four cans or more than four cans, excuse me, that they're going to be making that request of, you know, hey, I need five or six cans. That's what I've had for the last four years and I can't get by with less than, you know, five or six cans. Why are we making to that that where it has to come before council? Because I would think, not meaning to speak for everyone here, but if there's a business operating in town that is licensed, paying their taxes, uh, serving the tourists, serving the locals, doing what we want business to do in Luray, I can't imagine any of us, uh, even if I'm long gone from council years from now, denying a business these extra rollouts. And once again, I don't think any business would be requesting an extra rollout unless they filled it, or it's just money. Pouring down the drain, because they're not going to have extra rollouts if they're empty. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm just having this conversation. I, we're putting this, I mean, we're voting to to put this wording in there that a business has a max limit.
Is there currently an issue? Is it like someone that wants ten cans and it's going to, or what's the?
The, 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 the desire for this is so that any new businesses coming online, it encourages them to seek a dumpster on their site. The the new, the new facility that came in at baby moons. Uh, I believe that they have their own small dumpster, uh, rather than.
They they worked to get that done, and which wasn't even on site. They had to make arrangements with another property owner, so they went that route to make the effort. And because the location, the the inability of the property to get to it well, the the provider, Waste Management, actually denied, says we're not servicing that. So they had to go back to cans.
And 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 that's fine. The the intent is, is that.
And and I know exactly what you're saying, and I'd be fine if the verbiage or the wording said that there's a maximum of three cans per business, uh, if if a dumpster is a feasible option at that property, at that location. So if a dumpster's available, if they have the, if they have the footprint, if they have the ability to to put a dumpster there, I can see where we could limit it, but when we get to Main Street, um, the 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 folks that wrote the letter tonight, I'm thinking of Gathering Grounds, I'm thinking of others, that there's nowhere to put a dumpster. They're going to have to have rollout cans or they can't operate. I just, personally, I don't think that's an issue to come to council to make that approval. And now, if someone refused to put in a dumpster, okay, let's say that the, I can't think of one off the top of my head, but let's say there is a, there is a business, and as we start getting out of the downtown district, we do have Main Street businesses that do have room for a dumpster. And I agree completely that if they have space for it, that's more feasible, more aesthetically pleasing to the town and the image we want to have on Main Street instead of a pile of rollouts out there. If it is the option, I agree that that, hey, they're just limited to three rollouts or 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 three max, or three in addition to one, four. That, um, that they, we're not going to give them that fifth or sixth can because they do have space for a dumpster. I see what you're saying.
And and the intent is, is that this won't be an annual request. You know, the the intent is, is that once we adopt this ordinance, put in the 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 max of three, once a business has come in and and council or staff, however we we deem it appropriate, approves the additional cans, it they they don't have to keep coming back every year to say, I'm exceeding the three cans. It 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 is intended primarily just as to encourage new businesses. That that is the intent. There is a, there is a definite impact to some of our current businesses. But it would be just a one-time approval of, okay, uh, you know, if if Washington Warren truly needs six cans, okay. Council approves it, it's done going forward. You know, if if, uh, next door needs, continues to need the six cans that they have. Those are the, those are the the few things that truly will be coming back to you. And and honestly, I think it'd be coming back just as a one-time, because that's just the way I think it'll happen. But truly, the intent of 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 the the proposal of the three-can limit is to, as a means of encouraging the new businesses to to try and limit or to try and locate a dumpster on their side.
Okay.
So follow in with what?
Well, I was just, I was just going to say, following up on that, then are are we saying tonight that an existing business that, let's say, has six rollouts, once we approve this tonight, and let's say they've been in operation for ten years, is the town going to be approaching that business and say, hey, you've got six rollouts, but three's the max, or three additional is the max? So you can really only have four. Are we going to be telling an existing business of ten years that you can't have?
The 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 tone of the letter will simply be that with the adoption of this, there is a an upward maximum. However, you know, our records have indicated that you have had this many cans. Do you, do you, do you continue to need that? And if so, please acknowledge to us so that we can then convey to council that says, yes, they do. And then at at the July meeting, there'll simply would be a request to approve business X, Y, and Z for this many cans.
No, I I think that's silly. I'm sorry. I I think that, I think that if we say for the for the five or six that are, that have them, again, to Mister Pettit's point, they have them, they clearly have a need for them. If we want to look at doing this for the sake of encouraging future businesses to use them, I think that we can say effective, whatever meeting date, that we want to make this change in going forward for any, for any businesses that apply, that we could do that. I don't, I I I would not support now going back to those five or six.
And even then, I don't, I don't think it should go to council first. I think it could be administrative approval. If it's denied by administration, then they can appeal to council or something like that. That seems.
But for someone.
I don't want someone to have to come in here to to beg to get more trash cans, but honestly, you know, I get it, I understand.
Right, and for an existing business.
Then I'd like to, like for us to not just kind of dance around it, but say if there is an issue, let's just say what it is, so we know.
Yeah. If I was still a business paying for my can each month and bringing my meals taxed down each month, because the majority of these are restaurants that are in this situation, and doing my part to add to the town and pay the fees and the taxes and everything associated with it. If I've been operating for years and playing by the rules to get a letter or something that now I've got to come in and re- basically make a request to keep my cans already have, I I think that's a nightmare for us, a black eye on social media and what all's going to fall out from that.
So I guess the only, the only caveat would be, okay, so if we have a business that's currently also using a private uh, waste management company in conjunction with this, we deny this and now they're going to put a dozen cans, well? You know what I'm saying? Because they're like, oh, I'll just get twice as many cans. It's cheaper to do this than to pay for mine.
But they can't put the private stuff on public sidewalks and stuff like that, right?
No, but you see what I'm saying?
But yeah, it could go the other way and just.
As long as we're not creating an unintended consequence by now.
Well, that's where I'd like for.
So just to know what's going on, that's a, yeah, go ahead.
Right, what's what's existing, sort of be grandfathered, as far as what's been operating now, that that be grandfathered. But if if a current business that, let's say, has six rollouts and next week they come in and they want to add two more, no, that that may be staff decision or or whatever that, no, we're, you know, we're not going to add to it. To eliminate that possibility, like you're saying, I would think anyone that's in conjunction as far as rollouts and a dumpster, it doesn't make sense. You you just stick with your dumpster and not even have the rollouts if you've got space for the dumpster. But I know what you're saying. I I wouldn't want something here to backfire to where someone does have room for the dumpster. And I'm still in favor of us having some type of wording put into this that if a new business opens and anywhere in town, and they are producing more than the total of four rollouts, the additional one and three max, that if space allows, they must get a dumpster and not continue to add more rollouts, if that option's there. If the option's not there, then we'll deal with it as a staff decision or what may come before council.
Yeah, I mean, it feels like the consensus is to have some kind of language about dumpsters, like you said, maybe grandfather in the existing stuff. The question that would be the sticking point for me on the grandfathering end is, do you feel like there are current businesses that are, I don't know how to word it, extreme with the trash cans? Like, is there a problem in some places? Cause I I imagine that's where a lot of this comes from.
Well, and and they, and just to pay back on that, and, um, to confirm, the ones that have the multiple cans now, they have those because the dumpster is not an issue. They're, right, they cannot have a dumpster because of the location or access. Right, okay.
It's it's limited, yes.
Well, it wouldn't have to be a new business either. It could be just somebody that all of a sudden got a lot more business. You know, they've expanded their own business, so. I I think adding a lot of language on the fee schedule just gets it come too much. I'd rather just leave policies that we have as a town than you relate to the people when they come and ask for them. I mean, do you have to have it stated on the?
We don't have a policy as to the number of cans.
Well, let's make one, instead of just putting everything on the fee schedule.
Well, that was the intent is is that.
That's what.
I know. Seems like we're talking in circles a little bit.
So do you feel like there are some, like, abusers now? I mean, I hate to use that word specifically. Cause I know this comes from a lot of people where the comments were, we think this is unsightly, you know? And a lot of people have said stuff about the trash can thing. So do you think there are some businesses where it is a little extreme or what's the landscape look like from your standpoint?
The.
And I hate to even use that negative terminology because they're doing what they got to do.
The 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 biggest problem from my my personal perspective, on days of collection along Main Street, we want to encourage visitors and residents to be able to walk up and down Main Street. We are, we have made a concerted effort as far as infrastructure improvements to make Main Street as walkable, uh, facility as we can. On garbage days, depending on what time the cans are set out, by code, they can be set out seven o'clock at night the night before. So from seven o'clock until whenever they're removed from the, uh, from from the the sidewalk primarily, because most of the the businesses place those cans on 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 the sidewalk. Our sidewalks are typically five foot wide. The cans typically are two and a half to three foot wide. So when they're out en masse with seven, six, seven cans in a row, they do present an impediment to pedestrian traffic. There's no way we can get around that. Um, but the the hope was that by limiting it to to three cans for future businesses, that we won't have a wall of green, uh, one, one day a week. That was, that that's, that's the hope.
At least you're putting in the trash cans.
Well, I mean, from that perspective, I think like some kind of shallow language around dumpsters would be a no-brainer, because if there are some that, for whatever reason, could have dumpsters but don't, I mean, that would be an improvement in the number of cans, but I don't know if there are any that have the room that don't.
Well, and the.
I'm going to ask the big question, and don't give any names, okay? Do we know of a business or multiple businesses that do have a footprint for the dumpster? Realistic. Uh, I mean, you you can't just look at and say, hey, a dumpster fits here. You've got to think, it's just like the other issues ran here. Can a truck get in it? Can a truck get lined up with it? Is the surface enough to support a truck? Uh, when that thing lifts it and it's full, I mean, it, so there's a lot of things other than just the square footage of a dumpster that come into play. So where I'm going with this, once again, not asking for a name, do we have some businesses that today could be operating with a dumpster but fail to do it and are using six or seven rollouts?
Restaurants? No, sir. Uh, I I I believe they're they're operating as best they can within.
Can we stop right there then? Okay. Are there any other businesses other than restaurants that have more than four rollouts that are non-food related businesses that have more than four rollouts?
That could use a, that could, that could fit a dumpster?
I'm just asking that in general. And and. I'm just asking that in general. And the trash, I don't like the looks of the cans on the street either. It's the cost of doing business. I've been here all my life. We can go back twenty years and not have as many cans, but all these empty storefronts and nothing happening downtown. So, it's a byproduct of a thriving downtown and businesses succeeding. Unfortunately, we're not Disney. Our trash can't all be taken underground through a network that no one sees. It's rolled out on Tuesday and Wednesday mornings, if I'm correct. From the light west is Tuesday, and from the light east is Wednesday, as far as Main Street. It's the. It's the eyesore for doing business, for the successful business. But I'm gonna back up here. And I tell you what, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion. We can still have discussion. If.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Attorney brought up a good point that we do have to hold a public hearing before we can make a motion.
Ah, okay, okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, let's open the public hearing then on item. Well, what are we into?
FY twenty-three, twenty-four, rates and fees.
Okay, okay. All right, let's open the public hearing on that. Anyone here to speak on that? All right, Steve, you have any correspondence other than the letter?
Again, just Mr. Cisneros.
The letter you've indicated? Okay, all right. Hearing nothing else, I will close the public hearing. Okay, Jason.
All right.
Thank you. Jason, thank you for catching that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you. We've got deep into this. Well, before I make the motion, what staff has presented three extra mics, and if additional cart requests will be considered by staff or town council? Okay, the way it's written, I'm actually fine with that. And I don't think what we're, what this motion is doesn't include what I'm gonna bring up. I'm in favor of suggesting this to pass tonight as presented. However, I am not in favor of existing businesses that have more than four cans receiving a letter and having to make the request to keep the extra cans they already have, that they've had for years and have been operating that way. I'm going back to the idea that no one's gonna be paying for empty cans every month that are not needed, or having three cans and only filling them a third each, and paying for that when all their trash would fit in one can. I don't think anyone reasonable would be doing that. So, basically, I'm fine with how this is presented. But I'm concerned about sending the existing businesses that have been operating for years as they have been doing, and in relation to the same thing with the letter we got tonight, I think the town's sending a message that we're somewhat anti-business or failing to work with the struggles of what downtown Main Street businesses go through when your front door is the sidewalk, each side is another building that you share, and your back door maybe has three feet of space, so.
Do you want it to go before counsel, or would you be okay with it going administrative approval?
I think the extras could even go through administrative approval. I would say that if a future business that wanted more than three was denied by staff, then they could, they could come to counsel and appeal to us, which we may see it differently. But I think staff could use the good judgment to determine, do they need more than three extra?
And you also want to add something to say this just applies to new business, or like, any existing cans aren't affected by this, like, you've already got.
Well, and I think to what Mr. Bickers said, we're talking about everything that's affected here, but we're getting too wordy and trying to put too much into a fee schedule. I guess what I'm saying is, I will agree to make a motion that we approve this fee schedule as presented. The other half of this, that's not part of the motion, is separate. This asterisk, as far as, you know, that could be through staff, and if a business had a problem, it would come to counsel, and also that existing businesses could keep what they've got, if that's how they've been operating for a year or more.
Yeah, if that needs to go on the schedule, I don't know if it does or not. Maybe.
Well, like I said, yeah, that wouldn't have to go on a schedule. We're getting too many details into, just like a sewer tap fee. Okay, here's the fee that we're gonna be going on with, like a road cut or non-road cut, but we're not discussing everything involved in the details of what you have to do to get a sewer connection, water connection. We're just talking about a fee schedule. Am I correct?
Right, yeah. And the effective date is gonna be July one for all of this, right? Is that correct? So, anybody till July one would not be held to this? Anyone July one going forward, so that in and of itself takes care of our concern, and that we're not gonna get back to the existing and ask them to come for us? Yeah, okay.
Yes. Unfortunately, and I do apologize, we were focusing on restaurants for this. There was another segment that is more of the abuser of the cans. Large-scale apartments that technically do have space for dumpsters. However, it is cheaper for them to have cans for the individual tenants rather than pay for a dumpster.
There you go.
Okay, now, that makes perfect sense.
That's, so, honestly, if counsel wants to change the counsel to administrative, that's fine, but that. And I do apologize, because the intent was not to focus on restaurants, but I didn't want to bring up that there are some apartments that save money by using cans.
Yeah, without grandfather language, administrative approval, that addresses that issue, right?
So, nobody has to get the letter that you're referencing?
Correct.
Unless it's, you know.
Unless, yeah.
One of those places.
Steve, that makes perfect sense. I see where we're going. That's. Well, Ben, I've hung up on just the stretch of Main Street, but I understand exactly what you're saying. And yes, if there's space, and it's a, it's a business, not food, not food business, but it's a business, and right, be fifty cans where one dumpster could handle all that, right?
I thought of two things we haven't said yet. It seems like if you got a whole string of dumpsters or bins on the highway, that's one thing that parking spaces, businesses don't wanna have filled up, because, you know, they gotta be somewhere. And then I thought, well, maybe it's timing. Maybe we shouldn't let anybody put their bin out until the morning of the pickup, within a shorter time span, so they get out and get put back quickly, instead of being sitting there for a long period of time.
Unfortunately, that's a direct impact to your businesses that would typically be closing in the evening and may not arrive back until noon or whenever the business would open the next day.
I choked up a little bit.
Yes, sir. And again, the timing is intended to allow for, specifically businesses that, you know, aren't on site in the evening hours to place that can out. So, there, you know, we do try to accommodate when we can.
You said at seven to, what are the hours that they're allowed to have it out on the curb?
Technically, you're supposed to remove it within, I believe it's twenty-four hours, so.
Seven PM. The night before is seven PM.
Seven, seven, okay.
All right, let's do something here. All right, do we have a motion?
I'm gonna second Mr. Pettit's motion.
Well, I guess I'm gonna have to include this in there. Well. No, it's, Mr. Burke brought up a good example. The way I would be wording it would. Well, I guess the space of businesses does not, there's prohibited from having a dumpster due to, or restricted from having a dumpster due to its footprint or the space available.
But you're just changing the asterisk. That's really all you're changing, right? You're not changing anything other than the asterisk? Additional commercial cart requests considered by staff if.
Staff is gonna handle all that.
Dumpster, space is not feasible or whatever, however you word that.
Okay.
That's really all you're changing, right?
Yeah, if I could have that in front of me instead of having to scroll down. Okay, we're gonna give this a shot. I move the council adopt the ordinance for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, rates and fees schedule as presented. With the change of staff having the opportunity to make the decision of whether three additional rollouts, or more than three additional rollouts are feasible, based on whether a space for a dumpster is allowed or not, are feasible. Authorize the mayor to execute the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2024, rates and fees. I further move that counsel adopt the ordinance setting the business license tax rates for itinerant merchants participating in special events as presented and authorize the mayor to execute ordinance.
I seconded or Ron already did on.
I wanted to.
Good at that.
Okay, any more discussion? Daniel.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, we need another public hearing on the IBM financing. Is that right, Steve?
Yes, sir. Counsel's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and to consider approval of the financing of a replacement finance server through IBM Credit LLC. Total amount of the server and credit sought shall not exceed fifty thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars, with terms not exceeding sixty months.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on that. Anybody here tonight want to speak? Anybody signed up to speak? Steve, you have any comments on that? No correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion?
The only thing I see, it's small, but roughly eight thousand dollars of maintenance and prepaid services, can we just pay those? We're not paying seven percent, six to seven percent interest. It just seems like better use of our money than sitting in the bank. The rest of it at four and a half, I don't know, it's probably inflation this year, the next couple of years, but seven seems kinda high. That's my only thought, but again, it's a small thing.
I don't know that we'd be able to change those terms as they were provided by IBM, unfortunately.
We can add.
Okay.
Anybody else? Need a motion? Still need a motion.
And so, making a motion wouldn't compromise your ability to ask, or would we have to wait till you asked to?
No, sir. What we can do is just ask if there's the ability to prepay a portion of the agreed financing, similar to any mortgage that we would be undertaking. And if they agree to that, then we would definitely try and make that happen.
Okay.
Then I'll make a motion, which I guess I have to read once I find it in my agenda. I move the council adopt the resolution of the town council approving equipment financing for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars for the replacement of the finance server as presented.
Seconded.
All right, counsel, any more discussion? Any discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, we've been going.
Making a concerned face.
I was just looking at the lease payment schedule for the five-year lease for the equipment total. Principal amount right now is fifty thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars, which you just authorized. The actual payment over five years is gonna be fifty-five thousand, eight and four dollars and sixty cents. Would you mind amending your motion and second to that dollar amount?
Where's the amortization amount?
We have to take the whole amount forward without reduction.
Where's the schedule, the full schedule?
It's pages, one of two, two of two, toward the, next to the last page is in the back, lease payment schedule.
Oh, there it is.
I would be amenable to amending that motion, though I'd like to amend that motion to the dollar amount stated by Mr. Chrisman.
Second to that, don't we?
Second then.
Motion. Okay. All right, any more discussion?
Do we need to do the round again? The yes or nays?
Yeah, I think we do.
Yeah.
All right, Daniel?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
All right, fiscal year 2023, 2024, town budget. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Counsel's requested to approve the FY twenty-three, twenty-four town budget. Counsel conducted a public hearing at your May eighth meeting, and basically you had to wait at least seven days before you could consider adoption of it. You've remitted, prescribed time to consider the budget as presented, and if there's any questions, staff are available to answer.
We need a public hearing, don't we?
No, sir, we've already conducted.
All right, done it, okay. That's right. Okay. All right, counsel, any discussion?
Only to commend staff for making it work without having to adjust up any tax rates, I think that's pretty commendable.
We need a motion?
Mayor, I move the council adopts the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget as presented and authorize the mayor to execute the resolution adopting the fiscal year 23, 24 budget.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Daniel?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, bid award of janitorial services.
Yes, sir. Counsel's requested, give me a second, I gotta. Counsel's requested to consider approval of the award for the town janitorial services contract to JR Cleaning Services for a period of one year with four additional one-year contract extensions. JR's Cleaning Services has been, was previously awarded this contract and has been serving the town for the past four years.
Did we get any other bids?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll make the motion. Staff happy with the janitorial service?
Thank you, Joey. Second?
Okay, I can say it. Should I say?
Whatever you want to, go ahead, Joey.
I move the town council award the town building janitorial services contract to JR's Cleaning Services for the quoted cleaning rates for a period of one year with four possible additional one-year extensions as presented. A further move, the council authorize the town manager, town treasurer, and town attorney to execute all documents necessary for this contract approval.
Second that.
Any discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, 2023 re-adoption ordinance.
Well, I will defer to the town attorney, as this is his bailiwick.
Thank you, Steve. This is an ordinance that council takes up each June or July. Basically, this is just a way of making certain that all the changes to the state code that go into effect on July first are incorporated by reference into the town code provisions that they impact. So, we present that for your consideration and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Bodkens? Need a motion?
I move the town council adopt the ordinance, wait. Adopt the ordinance re-adopting portion of the Code of Virginia as presented.
Second that.
Any discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Okay, Lower Bridge Community College easement, Mr. Chrisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. In your packet is a multi-page easement document that was created by, I think, our attorney's firm, including an Exhibit A, which is a plat at that time, it was Lord Fairfax Community College. While this easement will not be needed right now, we hope that it'll be needed at some point in the near future. It basically extends town access for utilities ingress and egress, including electrical services, water, and sewer, from the end of Allison Drive through the college property to what is now parcel one D Baker Development. That is where the recently adopted Baker Drive segment right away would swing through there. So, it essentially would connect those two. there, so essentially we connect those two, hopefully, public thoroughfares at some point in the future. This is important because the electric company has three-phase power here. We have water currently here, and we may have sewer here at some point in the future. So the college is willing to grant the town this easement at this current time, and so my recommendation would be that we definitely take this. We'll need this at some point in time, hopefully sooner than later.
Questions for Mr. Chrisman?
I have a motion. I move that the town council accept the variable with utility easement across a portion of Laurel Ridge Community College as presented and authorize the town manager, town treasurer, and town attorney to execute all documents necessary to record the deed.
Second.
Right, any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your work on this, we appreciate it. Mr. Bodkins, you have anything for us?
I don't mean...
Oh, I'm sorry, the one we added.
Yes, sir.
You want to take that, Steve?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider acceptance of the DCJS Law Enforcement, ARPA Law Enforcement Equipment Grant in the amount of $155,000 to fund $128,000 for the Lray Police Department Communication Equipment upgrades, two ballistic shields, tronikits, and a thermal imager. Council's also requested to reallocate the $128,000 in Town ARPA funds previously allocated towards the Police Department Communications Equipment upgrades to fund the acquisition of a patrol vehicle for $53,000 and the construction of a new storage building at Dean Park for the public work, a public Parks and Rec Department for $60,000 that will free up space in the existing storage building behind Town Hall's parking lot for use by the Police Department.
Council, any questions? Yeah, congratulations, bud. Oh, we didn't. Well, take the congratulations from people offering. We've hacked the governor now. All right, anyway, any discussion on that?
Well, since Boden put any work in it, is there anything else on our capital improvement plan that might be higher priority in the opinion of staff?
Actually, this is a very good use of funding, and thankfully, the timing worked out that paying, reimbursing ourselves for the communications equipment is a big deal because the chief and his application for this grant wasn't just handed out to him, there was some work on the part of the Police Department.
No, I'm sure.
They did have to identify items that had to be spent within, I believe it's 90 or 120 days. There's, the money has to be spent quite quickly so that the state gets credit for their ARPA allocations, so the communications funding is a big component of the application, and then some of the smaller things that are definitely in need for the Police Department. And then it allows us to then purchase another vehicle for our Police Department that, and then this storage building that will help them pursue their storage for items.
Is the, with the new Parks and Rec building constructed and then moving out from here, is that a joint? Is it, does Public Works have part of that building too? So this is going to be a building shared by?
Correct. We're working on a new facility for Public Works for their, for the buildings that were, the vehicles that were acquired don't fit within any of our current Public Works facilities, so we, Brian and Lynn are working on a facility out by the, near the water plant that would allow us to store those vehicles inside and preserve their longevity.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? You have the motion. Anybody want to make that motion?
I have it. I move that the town council accept the DCJS LE ARPA Law Enforcement Equipment Grant in the amount of $155,000 to fund equipment for the Lray Police Department. I further move to really allocate the 128 in Town ARPA funding previously allocated to the LPD Communication Equipment upgrades to fund $53,000 for a new patrol vehicle and $60,000 for a new storage building at Dean Park as presented.
Second that.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Bodkins, you have anything for, anything else for us tonight?
No, sir, not this evening.
All right, council, any thing to bring up? Any thoughts?
Are you still going in closed session?
Yeah, we will. Alex, we do congratulate you on your graduation from Harvard. We're proud of you. That's quite an achievement. I'll remind everybody, the picnic, once you have your notice air, is December, excuse me, how did I get that? July 3rd, and we'll be trying to get a count together at some point. Have we already started that, Danielle, or?
We have, we can, yes. Just let us know.
Let us know as soon as you can.
So what's, still talking about, like, showing up at 10 or 11 that day?
If you can.
Can we get, can we get Leroy back to cook the steak?
I have made arrangements with Leroy.
Yes.
All right.
The only other thing I have, we do have, I guess, there is a ribbon cutting at the farmer's market Saturday. I know everybody's busy, and I know we don't all check our emails, but it would be nice if we could get more council folks at these ribbon cuttings. I have asked Steve to, if it's okay with you all, to start sending text messages as reminders. Is everybody okay with that?
He's done well with that. Yeah, it's just been crazy.
I know we all carry our phones, but we don't, we don't carry our computers, so what would be the best timing on that? The night before, the morning of, what do y'all prefer?
Night before.
Night before.
Night before is better. I can't make it.
Well, I think, I understand your, well, you can make it Saturday, you know? They don't make you work on Saturday over there. Okay, I understand. All right, that's all I have. We will go into recess to discuss the appointment recommendation for the Board of Zoning Appeals. If you're listening at home, after the closed session, we will come back, but essentially the, we're through for the evening. Enjoy your evening, thank you for being with us, and just enjoy your evening, thank you. All right.
I want us to go to closed session.
I move the town council convene and go into closed meeting for the purpose of discussion of the appointment recommendation for the vacant seat on the town's Board of Zoning Appeals as authorized by Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. The subject matter is the appointment recommendation for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Seconded.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Dolphomar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
You got to vote on that one.
You got to vote on that one.
You want me to catch that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I move the closed meeting be adjourned, and the Loray Town Council reconvene in open session.
Danielle?
Seconded.
Oh, she's not here. Steve, who's here? Oh, you're back. How'd you get back? It's been a long night. Okay, maybe I should stand up.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, who wants to certify?
I'll handle that too. Are we going, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I move that with respect to the just completed closed session and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the town council.
Okay. Danielle, you're back, right? Go ahead.
Did someone second it?
Seconded.
Seconded, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor Dolphomar?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, anything else, anybody? Adjourned.